Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of May 22, 2018 at 5:30. I'll call this meeting to order. We're going to change our methodology this evening. We have a group of scouts here, and Mr. Nathan Hammer is going to say the invocation. Is Mr. Hammer here?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, if you will come up. Right there.
Please remove all nonreligious headgear. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity of being able to be here. I please pray that we can make some good decisions here tonight for our city, and thank you for us all being able to come out here and discuss stuff at the council meeting, and... Amen.
Thank you. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Eagle Scout Riley Benson. It's Mr. Benson. Here he comes. You'll all stand for the pledge. Whenever you're ready.
Scout salute. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. The first item is item four, Special Recognitions and Presentation. The first is Mayor's Fitness Challenge.
Mayor, before we do that, I'd like to add an agenda item this evening. We've got our Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Cook. Would like to address the council on the Complete Street Hopkins Project to give you an update on that project.
At what point would you like to do that?
Sir, we'd like to do that after item E.
All right.
Council will have to approve that to add to the agenda.
Oh, okay. We need a vote on that motion.
I'd make the motion to have Kevin Cook address us about the Complete Street project on Hopkins.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
And on to the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge lasted from February 3rd to April 28th and was a friendly, fun, healthy competition. Weekly, each municipality was awarded points for their total amount of exercise. The city was with the most points at the end of the challenge won. As part of the contest, one male and one female would be declared the winner of the great weight-off. Overall, we had the largest percentage of weight loss at the end of the competition would win a $500 cash prize. As determined, Mr. Eric Coleman of the Titusville Police Department Information Technology decided that Titusville needed to be on the stage, so he set out to win the great weight-off. On May 5, 2018, Mr. Coleman did just that and was presented a check for $500. Eric managed to lose an astounding 18% of his body fat during this challenge. It can be said that he brought home the bacon for Titusville, but he didn't eat it. So please help us to congratulate him for such a great job and well done. And Mayor, if you would, meet Mr. Coleman, and we have a few items to present to him.
We had a little discussion before that, and that was in pounds, because 18% doesn't always mean a lot, but 70 pounds, 70 pounds. Coast to Coast Bicycle Company, Monday Rental Company. And Sunshine Health Foods. That sounds appropriate, at least. There you go, that's it. And YMC's Family Center. So, congra-- and $500. I told them my loss is a lot of weight, about four or five years ago. It could have been passed, so... But nobody gave me $500. Congratulations. Thank you. Next item, Friends of the Cemetery?
Yes, sir. Friends of the Cemetery will be recognized for their efforts in helping to restore the Day Street Veterans Cemetery. And I think we have a brief slideshow. If you could go ahead and bring that up. Next slide.
Now, as I understand, these are both before. Is that correct? Go back to that last one, please. Now, take a good look at that one on the left, if you will, because the last one of them is the after to that before. So if you'll go to the next slide. And that's people, obviously, working hard. If you know the names of the people and you want to say them, I don't know who they are.
Yeah, this is Maria again, Ray's wife. She painted a couple of those.
And go back, go back again, so that...
That looks like that concept, and that ballplayer person is me. I don't know how to fire that thing, that it won't...
I'm glad, because somebody might have got hurt.
Go back, go forward.
Go forward.
And that looks like Mr. Braun, I'm not sure.
Jim Braun.
Jim Braun. Yeah. They're digging out the cremated grave area. They're getting it ready for the slides that they're going to show. We saw a need to upgrade both of those places, the entrance, the hallway, and the graves.
Next one.
That's still people working on it. That's a guy spraying gun. That's...
That's dustless, that's dustless spray. I think that's Mr. William, Mr. Wilkins. Yep. And that's Mr. Braun and Marcia Gemenes. This is the founder of this cemetery about 40 years ago. In fact, 40 years ago this year, Mr. Rice, he's laid the rest there. Him and about six others buried a veteran up in the Pottersfield Cemetery and decided that no veteran should be buried in the Pottersfield Cemetery, that they should have a cemetery of their own and be buried with dignity in a veteran cemetery. So 40 years ago, November of this year will be the 40th anniversary of that cemetery. This is the after picture of the one you saw before of the entrance. This is the paver walkway that was designed and managed by this scout sitting next to me, Dylan Benson. Secure fence and rail, did the labor and put it together, laid it. And Dylan designed it, raised the money for it, and led the project. He now is an Eagle Scout. And I'm Sam de Blasio, the leader. Commander of the VFW is Robert Potry. This is Albert Terrio. And I don't know why Tom's name is not up there. Tom Stewart, he's a friend of mine from church. The four of us started the Friends of the Cemetery, and then we adopted Dylan and Wyatt. There are two Eagle Scouts, and we got two more coming up the ranks.
If you will join me up here, sir, for a moment.
Yes, sir. Can I have them come up with me?
Sure.
Albert?
I'll take that.
Who else is here? That's it. Okay.
I can tell you, this has been one great project. They've taken a cemetery that had just fallen into oblivion for many years and turned it into something beautiful. And all the people worked on weekends or whenever they could, and it's been all volunteers, and it's been just terrific. I have a certificate of appreciation from the City of Titusville. The City of Titusville, Florida is pleased to present this certificate of appreciation to Friends of the Cemetery in recognition of all their many volunteers' hours spent in the beautification efforts at Day Street Veterans Cemetery. Signed, Walt Johnson, Mayor.
I'm going to give it to you, son, or maybe you should give it to the chief there. I'm not sure. Now we're going to get a picture taken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Great job.
And one thing Sam didn't do is invite you this weekend, Saturday, all day. There is a picnic in the cemetery.
I have it on my schedule.
And Monday is Memorial Day. We'll be out there eight o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning.
All right. See you then. All right, thank you, sir.
You've got to keep the money away from you. Yeah.
That's their job. That's the council job.
We pride.
Next item, sir.
Tifa LLC is a company formed by the City of Titusville and Farmington Water Resources, LLC to supply raw water. In accordance with Article 5, Section 5.2.1 of the Tifa LLC Operating Agreement, an audit of financial statements was performed for the years ending December 31, 2017 and 2016. The firm, the firm of Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace, PA, Certified Public Accountants, conducted the audit. We have a representative to discuss the audit with you, and council, we recommend that you acknowledge the FY 17 and 16 audit of Tifa LLC as presented by the accounting firm of Moore, Stevens, Lovelace, PA, Certified Public Accounts. Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Just state your name, please.
Farland Halleckman. I'm a partner at MSL and was the partner in charge of the Tifa audit this year and for the last several years. I've been coming before the board to do this. So, good evening, Mayor, and council and staff.
Good evening, sir. Does anybody have any, we've, I assume everybody has read this and gone over it with staff, because it's quite an extensive item. Does anybody have any questions of the gentleman? I see none, but you have anything you'd like to say about it?
I do want to say that it was a clean audit, the best kind of an audit report you can have, an uneventful audit, which is even better. It was rock-solid stability. You've really got no big construction projects coming online there during 2017. You know, both wellfields have been fully developed, nothing new happening. I think that it's important to know that you pumped about a billion gallons of water out of that wellfield. And there's, the water is there, and the technology that you're using should ensure sustainability with a minimum disruption to the ecology and the least amount of saltwater intrusion, which are problems that you used to have. I presume that everybody here knows the history of Tifa and doesn't need to go back into why we're doing what we're doing, but you're doing it, and you're doing it well.
I think we are doing it.
The key control is because of that history, you have two partners that had come out of a contentious legal situation, and Tifa was the settlement. And so, there's this trust-but-verify culture that was established early on that continues to this day. And in the reading of the meters on December 31st, we ride around and pick up trucks back in the woods and actually read the meters. There's four sets of eyes looking at that. You have the folks from representing the Farmington and all the way, Miami Corporation, their owners, and the Deering family, the ultimate owners. And then you have folks from the city, and then you have folks from the management company, which is engaged by both the city and Farmington. And then you have the auditors looking over their shoulders and the management company. So everybody's looking at that meter read, which is the number of gallons, and then from there, the math takes over, and you end up with the numbers in the financial statements.
It certainly has been a good partnership, and as you say, it started out with having different views of what we needed to do, but we came together on it, and it's working for the people of Titusville.
It seems to be working really, really well.
Very well.
Yeah.
But you said nothing new. We got lots of new things that have been happening, so I don't know what you meant by that.
Well, as far as the, as far as the construction on the wellfields.
On the wellfield only, okay.
Right.
You weren't talking about the rest of the community.
Right, right, right.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And we need to make a acknowledgement. I guess we have to do it instant-- do you have a question? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to acknowledge the fiscal year 2017 audit of Tifa LLC?
I'd move to acknowledge the financial year 2017 audit of Tifa LLC.
I have a second?
Sir.
Take your pick. Which guy? Matt? Matt's got it. Okay. I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I do want to thank your staff that has consistently made our job and achieving our objectives easy.
We have a great staff, and they do a great job, and it's, this is another thing that proves it, right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, sir.
Yes, sir. The Historic Resources Survey and Preservation Plan. Environmental Services Incorporated has submitted the task three items of the citywide historic resources survey. The items include the March Monthly Report, the Draft Historic Resources Survey, and the Draft Historic Preservation Plan. The history, the Historic Preservation Board reviewed and accepted these items with some changes. We have Mr. Brad Parrish here to give a brief presentation, and staff's recommendation is that council acknowledge the presentation on the Draft Historic Resource Survey and Draft Preservation Plan.
Sir Parrish, if you will.
Thank you. As you probably remember, last year, we got a grant from the state to go forward with the survey of all of our historic structures within the city. And we, the consultant that we hired to do that is almost completed with this. They have, we have a draft survey of 150 structures that were identified throughout the city outside the CRA that could potentially be eligible for national or even local designation. And then, so they submitted a preservation plan, which was one of the requirements of the grant. And that gives us a kind of a priority, how we should go forward in the next few years to figure out how we preserve some of these structures. So I'm just going to give you a brief description of some of the slides that were presented to us by the consultant at the Historic Preservation Board. One significant recommendation by the board, by the consultant, was to adopt comprehensive plan policies related to historic preservation, which we currently have, but what the consultant is suggesting in our preservation plan is much more expanded, and we'd like to roll that into our comprehensive plan update with your approval. So the consultant primarily looked at the area just west of the CRA and up and down US-1, going all the way down to the Indian River Lagoon, or Indian River City neighborhood, rather. They did not really focus on anywhere else outside of this area. There were, the first criterion of the property being designated historic is being 50 years or older. Of course, there are other criteria that would have to follow, but that first one is the first, is the only thing they looked at initially. And that would include a lot of properties throughout the city. So they tried to focus, and they were focused in these areas first, which are, we thought were the most threatened areas. Again, about 150 structures were agreed to look at and to designate, so they'd identified 150 of those structures, and that's included in a survey that's submitted to you. The last time we did this for the entire city was back in 1987, so this was due for an update. The three main areas they looked at, this is the area just west of the CRA. We initially had 57 properties or structures that were listed and, or as potentially qualified for historic and are part of the state of Florida's master site file. They have thousands of files that are records of several properties and structures around the state of Florida, up in Tallahassee. Not necessarily meaning they are qualified to be on the national register, but they could, they are just historic in some way. And so, now we have 81 new records recorded as a result of the survey that this consultant did in this area. They did find that there were some significant historic areas within this neighborhood, especially a, I think some people already are aware of this, there was a black school that was established here in the early part of the 20th century and was burned down, and I believe there was another one there that was erected in 1915 at the site of the Harry T. Moore Center. And there, we did have some people from Neighborhood Services attend that meeting, presentation as well, and they were impressed with the presentation and wanted to bring that information, this information back to their group that they are hosting right now in order to come up with a neighborhood plan to better utilize our CDBG money. And so, we're going to present some more information about this to their group on June 18th. Another area they looked at was just south of the CRA, primarily around Titusville High School. Previously, there were five properties or structures recorded, and now they've identified 19 more to be included. And then the third area, of course, is the Indian River City neighborhood. Previously, there were only five structures that were recorded, and now there are 22 additional structures. And this doesn't include, in all three of these areas, an additional 127 or more in each one of these areas that the consultant thought might qualify just by age. And so, because of the limited amount of funds and resources, they only looked at 150, we had to kind of spread out our scope in these areas a little bit, but not look at, basically, they had to be selective as to which properties and structures they would consider to be identified and listed, and then submit it to the state. The preservation plan includes several parts to it. Probably the most important part, I thought, was the recommendations for a disaster preparedness. We, I recently attended a conference up in Jacksonville about this, about a lot of historic structures around the state of Florida being threatened as a result of natural disasters and sea level rise. And so, there's a, if you remember the last presentation I gave to you about sea level rise and policies we have to introduce in our comp plan, this is kind of related. So now, a lot of cities are trying to figure out ways to protect the historic structures as a result of this issue. Another recommendation they presented was what's called a Neighborhood Conservation That has to do with kind of coming up with like a historic preservation district light, not officially coming up with a district, but maybe coming up with other tools, zoning tools, to help preserve and protect historic structures in these neighborhoods. For example, the area just west of the CRA, they thought that that area could, there were enough structures there that could lend itself to becoming a historic district, whether it's national or maybe just a locally designated area. But they did not see that there was enough concentration of buildings to really make that qualification just yet. So they thought, well, maybe we could use what's called a Neighborhood Conservation Overlay or District, which is more like a zoning tool, to help, that would have some design guidelines to help protect some of the structures in those areas, so that the property owners, the developers, would not be, they would have to abide by that zoning district and not transform some of those structures that are identified as contributing to, potentially to a district, and make them, destroy them or to convert them in some way that would be, lose their historic quality. So those are just a couple of tools that they suggested. In the preservation plan, and there is a list of comprehensive plan policies. If we had a chance to review those, I'll try and answer any questions about that, but they are basically suggesting that we come up with a separate element called historic preservation. And so that would go above and beyond our current policies that we have in our comp plan, which address housing only. These policies would address historic preservation in relation to disaster preparedness, in relation to archaeology, relation to commercial businesses, and just looking at historic preservation in a much more broader way than just looking at protecting a house and its historic character. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this. We're really just asking for your input at this point.
Any questions from any of the council members?
I don't mind.
Sure.
So Brad, you're talking about an overlay to preserve those homes, correct?
Yes.
But if those homes are on the national register, they can't, my understanding has always been you can't change the exterior of that building.
A prop--
So what would it add?
A structure that's on a national register really does not have local protection.
Okay.
It has protection from any funds that may be used by the federal government. So there, it would be, have protection as far as review of what's called a Section 106. What that means is you have any federal funds that are going to be used within a certain distance of that particular historic structure that's on the national register, there has to be an additional review. It's kind of like an environmental review, but now they have to look at it for historic impacts. But it does not have local protection. We have to apply our own ordinance onto that in order to protect it.
So if it's a, on a state register, does that, what does that do to it?
There is not a state register. There is a list that they keep, inventory of properties that are potentially historic.
Okay.
That's it. There isn't a--
So really, there's no protection?
Without local ordinance, no.
So an overlay would do that?
An overlay could, and there are several versions and variations of that in other communities that could be looked at to see if that might apply here.
Okay.
communities that could be looked at to see if that might apply here, in lieu of creating a historic district.
Which would be easier, I would think.
The way our ordinance is written right now, historic district would not, you would require or ask for the consent of the property owners.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, council? So what exactly are you asking us to do tonight? All, all of those things, or just?
No, sir, we're just asking for your input. The policies that are comprehensive plan related will be rolled into the draft comprehensive plan that we will present to you later this summer with all the other policies and elements. And at that time, that's when you'll make an official action on those particular policies. Right now, at this point, we're just asking for your input on this preservation plan, strategies, and of course, the policies, if you have any.
I don't think there's any further input, but at this point, we can acknowledge the presentation of the draft historic resources survey and the draft preservation plan. I need a motion on that?
I can do a motion. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. Need a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any opposed, like sign, you got it. Thank you. Next item is letters of appreciation.
Yes, sir. I'd like to read the letters of appreciation we've received for the record from the building department, Mr. Steve Adams, Jacob Begley, David Benninghoff, Kenneth Dobson, Karen Dorman, Darcy Floss, Dennis Franklin, Mariana Histrova, Lorie Ott, and Gary Stavonovich. From our fire and emergency services, Matt Baker, Bobby Crocker, David Higginbotham, Shane Wilson, and from our water department, Maureen Phillips.
All right. You asked to put another item on here?
Yes, sir. I've got Mr. Cook in audience, and he's going to help describe what is going on with the Hopkins Street Complete Project and answer any questions that council may have regarding that.
Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, good. Start with that. See, I just wanted to come see, manager asked to come answer some questions, provide an update. As you may be aware, the TPO took action last week to transfer the remaining balance of the TIF funds over to another project at TPO's discretion, SU funds or TPO's control. This was discussed with the scope change, they went through with the DOT. Just kind of give you some insight into the scope change. Overall, the project totals go from 6.8, 6.91 million down to 2.38 million federal. Some idea of what that accounted for and the difference. Went back and looked at our estimates when it was under full scope, and that's, the primary change is about $2.7 million for the sidewalks and driveways. As you may recall, initial scope was replace every piece of concrete, whether it be curved sidewalk or driveway through the whole corridor. That's also the crux of the challenge, ADA compliance wise and right of way wise. That posed a huge ordeal to replace the sidewalks. If you take a look at the corridor, the FPL infrastructures installed throughout that makes our sidewalks have to stay where they are. They can't go any further out, they can't really come in. It's actually gotten a little worse with the new poles that went in, the concrete poles. So you had a couple of options there, FPL relocates, probably 10 to 12 million dollars with the relocates been funded by the city, DOT wouldn't have funded that. Or we scope it down to make sure we can get the project built. So what the 2.38 million will get is a ADA improvement, as required resurfacing, which means every intersection will get the required improvements, which is required of any resurfacing project. The full road will be resurfaced, down full two inches. Bike lanes will be added. The center turn will be fixed to 11 feet, everything else will vary to fit a minimum of five foot bike lane with striping buffers. And the two lane section will be resurfaced as well. That section will be share roads, shared roadways. You've seen them a lot more prevalent now than they used to be. All the signals will get upgraded, new loop detectors and things that the Melings will take out. The two school zones will be completely renovated to a new standard. St. Teresa currently doesn't have a state standard school zone. We have a sign that's no longer allowed, so they'll have a flashing beacon, solar mounted. New state law says that you install speeding fines double in school zones, so those will be added to both the high school and to St. Teresa. To let you know, private schools no longer considered exempt from those school zones, now they pick them up too. So that's an add-on. On top of the 2.38 million, the city's going to put about a half million dollars into sidewalk infill to ensure that both sides are covered, start to finish. So walking paths will be established on areas that are gapped right now around the high school, around the Sycamore signals, a few spots down on the other end of Hopkins. We'll also be putting in about 0.6 million worth of landscaping, which is actually comparable to the package the consultant was working on, maybe a little higher. So we're still going to get the, those improvements, and primarily, again, the trade-out is that the, every piece of sidewalk, every piece of driveway won't be replaced. That's the primary trade-out. The plus side for the businesses is, instead of a two to three-year project, it's a six-month project. If you were here for the Park Avenue widening, we know we trap businesses in a closed roadway for six to eight months, it basically eradicates their business. So that would have happened on Hopkins a month at a, a block at a time. So that's a benefit to the business community, not to have to deal with that. To update a little further, everything's approved, bid package went back today to DOT, and we expect a bid June 22nd, so.
Is that?
Yep.
Okay. One second. Any, any questions or discussion from council, from Mr. Cook? Are you seeing that?
Oh.
Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. There, I should look at the numbers. Member Stokel?
Yep. So you said originally, the plan, the scope was 6.9 million, now it's down to 2.38 million? Can you explain where that 6.9 million was coming from, as far as where we were getting that money, and now where's the 2.3 million coming from?
They're both fully funds. TPO has discretionary funds called SU dollars, they, they implement for complete streets. 6.91 came from a Kettleson study, consultant study a couple of years ago, where they had come up with the package for the corridors. If you remember, they did studies on just about every corridor eligible in the whole county. So that's where that started. It went into the DOT's work program, and actually, it's two, it's two pieces. There's a million dollars for design, 5.9 million was reserved for construction, the million for design, we got, we encumbered, used up, sent back. The project closes out this month. The 5.91 is construction, that's the maximum amount that DOT would pay. The way the LAPD reads, anything above that, it would have gone to the city. To let you know, the last estimate was above that, there would have been contribution to the city required, and that, that's dated about a year ago. But that's all federal dollars coming through, pass-throughs.
Okay, so both of them are federal funds? So no city funds?
No, not in these amounts, no.
Okay, and so, can you explain, it's pretty much we're losing a little over $4 million of federal dollars. What are we missing out, I guess, on the complete street project now?
We're not going to miss out on anything. It would have been the trade-out of fitting a four-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk, which would have predicated replacing a driveway, it would have created easements on every property for us to access the driveway. That's prime, that's what the difference is.
So that would-
The roadway configuration is going to be the same. We already have sidewalks nearly covering the entire corridor. State standard of five-foot sidewalk, we use a four. So as we move to a state project, we go up to their sidewalks. And once you touch sidewalks, driveways have to go with them.
Okay, so the side, that sidewalk difference in the driveways would have cost roughly $5 million?
Yeah, because you have, no, that, that's around 2.6 million, because you have to take sidewalk completely out to put in the extra foot, so.
Okay.
So.
Well, where's the extra, I guess, $2 million, or?
Well, there's about, the landscaping was about half a million, we're putting that back through mitigation funds.
Okay.
We had another trade-out of signal, putting in masked arms. Some of the signals already been replaced, that was more of a benefit that we were going to get from that moment, not necessity, more of a take it when you get it type of situation. So.
Okay, and then, this is my last question. So when we met with staff about this, or at least I know, I don't know if other council members met with staff, I met on Friday, and I was asking questions as to why we were changing the scope, where did this come from? They had mentioned that we were not able to comply with state requirements with the FPL. Is, I guess, why are we changing it, I guess, is my question? Why are we scaling back our plan?
Yeah, the challenge is, on a sidewalk, we'll design a sidewalk to put it right at the right-of-way line. Feasibility construction, you can do that. State says you can't move it in a foot. Look at a tight corridor, that one foot shifting in puts you into a pole, some places puts you into retaining walls. That creates problems when we're dealing with the state in that aspect. Where we can build a sidewalk that touches a curve that is five foot wide, the state says must be six. Normally, not a problem when there's a pole in the back of that sidewalk and you can't get around it. Now, it creates a problem from ADA standpoint. Currently, the state's ADA requirement is four feet, 48 inches. The city has to comply with 30 inches. We can get a lot, fire hydrants and things a lot easier when we use a 30-inch standard as opposed to a 48-inch standard. Those are just some of the challenges that popped up. When you go to trade-out a driveway to a state standard driveway, they go from maybe 12 feet wide to 26 feet wide. So you have to take out more area, you have to back up the properties further. So when you cross that property line, now you have easements, right-of-way acquisitions and things that come into effect.
Okay. So I guess from staff's point of view, it wasn't worth those, overcoming some of those challenges for the additional funds we would have received?
Well, we did try.
Okay.
For nine months, we're designing, we tried, and what ended up happening was, we had essentially a year left in our agreements to put a project on the street. Within that year, we could not meet these challenges effectively, so at that point, we had the opportunity to change and get what we could out of it and meet that requirement and put a project on the street.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Member Diesel?
Similarly, this project started at $6.9 million. That's what we understood, and that's what they understood, right?
Yep.
And so when we looked at the project and the steps we were going to take in this project, we had no idea that it was going to be cut down to 2.3 million?
Not until, not until the scope was altered September a year ago, that the request was made to lower the scope to build a project. So no, we, we efforted on a full project, full complete streets project. We went through six or eight review cycles with the state, trying to address their concerns. There were things we couldn't address effectively in their concern, and that's how we ended up with a scope change request.
Now, when you talk about scope change, when this started, the $6.9 million providers knew where this was going, right? They knew where, I guess what I'm getting at is, and I use this analogy earlier, it seems like if you're going to build a 100-yard football field, you don't go to an 80-yard area and say, "We can do this," and then, as you discuss, you say, "Oh, well, that's not going to work." It just seems like when you got started, we should know, we should know, or they should know, or somebody should know that we're going to lose $4 million here some way.
With it, the consultants that did it, I think Hopkins was the highest cost complete street because of the right-of-way issues, but they felt it was fittable. Now, going back a couple of years, ADA standards for DOT didn't change until a year ago. So, so there were changes, every July, the state updates its standards. So this year, they're making a major overhaul to all their standards. So there are changes that happened, their consultant proposed, let's just know, the consultant proposed things like cycle tracks, tabletop intersections, which are rising intersections, and it could have gone as high as a $12 million project. So the $6 million was what was picked kind of out of the buffet that was there to be done. Now, in a feasibility conceptual standpoint, they don't look at every nook and cranny of what is there, whether there's a pole in the way or a retaining wall in the way. They don't look at those, they take it from, the right-of-way is buildable, we're going to build it. So when there are areas of Hopkins that that's true, you have room to do everything you want to. There are a lot of areas that that's not the case. You know, take for instance, along St. Teresa where you have a retaining wall, a wall for the neighborhood, that wall would be coming out if we had to work on that sidewalk. So, because there are poles in there. Can't get around them by state standard, remove the wall. Problem is, that wall is not in the right-of-way. So we take a wall out, have to procure right-of-ways to take and expand our sidewalks on a private property. So, and that was not incorporated into their, the thought process of the project, was right-of acquisitions and things of that, those conflict points.
It seems like maybe they should work on that, but that's, I'm not the expert on that. So when did the $6.9 million original amount come our way? Not, we didn't get that amount, but when did that number come our way?
6.9 was in the work program three years ago. It's a million, million in design, which was authorized, I think, 2015, and then the 5.91 million is construction that never actually got authorized to the city. It was held in state hands until the LAP agreement, two months ago, authorized the 1.38 million. They never actually provided the money until the LAP agreement is issued.
Right, I get that. I'm, I'm trying to get a timeframe here of when we might have had an idea that we were going to lose that because we couldn't meet their standards. When, when did it start to look like we were going to lose some of that 6.9 million?
August a year ago.
Say that again?
August a year ago was when we were asked to, when the decision made to down-skip the project due to timing.
Okay, I guess a concern that I have is that we look like we might lose a, a big chunk of money to, to the Hopkins project a year ago, and I believe I heard about it yesterday. And, and that, that concerns me, so.
We actually brought a presentation with the LAP agreement that described the entire change, to describe what came out, what stayed in, the LAP agreement for construction, which was authorized by the council two to three months ago.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think I realized what we lost was going to go somewhere else. That might be what probably bothers me most, because if we lost it there, I sure would like to have had it gone somewhere else on our streets.
We don't have another complete eligible street, complete streets eligible. I think the other one was Garden Street, which is state road. The, the TPO funding is for complete streets, so they allocate it to another complete street or to another priority of theirs. Now, I will say that it could have been $10 million if it hadn't been authorized for right-of-way acquisitions. The city would have been buying the right-of-ways. The city would have expended millions of dollars in purchasing right-of-ways and moving poles that would not have been federally funded or federally eligible. So the, the federal money was going to stay at 6.9, and the project could have gone to 10 or 12, and the city would have fronted the bill for that $6 million, if that's what it took to acquire right-of-ways and do work beyond the scope the feds are going to pay for. They weren't going up, they were, so if we had to build it and build it to meet their standards and buy right-of-ways, the number would have gotten astronomically higher.
Okay, well, I'm excited to get what we're going to get, I'm just concerned that what we had might have moved down south a little bit. But what's the, what's the timeline now? Because I've heard several timelines from April to May to August, what's the timeline now for us to get this thing started?
June 22nd is our bid date, that's set. We've already published that for the feds. So they're open in July, award in August. I would expect the project complete by February, March of '19. Maybe sooner, depending on when papers move in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I, by the way, thank you. It's informative and it's helpful just to be able to communicate back to the citizens. And if it's okay, I'm just going to communicate what I'm hearing, just to make sure I got it, and that way, I'm not confused. In short, Hopkins is still getting paved. There's still going to be a bike lane, there's still landscape coming, coming. If we wanted to do, if theoretically we had wanted to do exactly what we said we would have done in the first place, we'd probably be into it for another $12 million out of the city's pocket for removing poles and some other things, somewhere about it. So I'm just saying, so the option from council, and I, and this is where I just want to make sure, to be fair and responsibility, if the option, if you were to ask me tomorrow, hey, for $12 million, we can move some poles on Hopkins, I would vote no for that. So I'm just communicating. The original plan with the guidelines of the city, I think, was the best of our intent. The moment you say FDOT has been my humble experience from the background, not the guy involved, but from the background, that that gets confusing, the moment they show up, at best. I've never seen a project with FDOT go flawlessly and exhibit exactly what we want, exactly the way that we want, just in my public opinion. Working with them, maybe a little bit different. As an example, if we keep in mind, you know, they laid out, TPO laid out, you know, a roundabout and Titansville needs in 2025 or 2030, something like that, right? And so those are some of the things where that connection of what FDOT asks for being reflective of exactly what a community's threshold of willingness to do is, sometimes I think there's a disconnect in there, and I think that, Mr. Cook, you have been working hard on making sure that what we're trying to get is what we're going to get, still meeting the, the criteria of FDOT. I think maybe just something, you know, kind of to member Diesel's point, and I think for everybody, is just if there is, as a council, I personally, I thank you for the presumption that- I, I, personally, I thank you for the presumption that, you know, twelve million bucks to move those poles may not have been something that we would wanna do. You know, potentially for, because it's such a big project in one of our portions of our community, and the intent was there, and if something was gonna change and it was brought back before council and we said, drive on, that's good. If it comes for losing funding, uh, or it will go somewhere else unless we spend money. I just know as a council, that's something that we, we wanna be abreast of and just have an opportunity to dive into that is always thankful. But, yeah, I just, no, you, you got my full confidence in, in trying to get this thing done. It was years ago before I was even a council and, and Mayor Johnson was, was driving this one with Ms. Barker, talking about complete streets. And so this is a long-term project. So to, to remember, or to Mr. Cook's point, if FDOT is rewriting rules every year and it takes from our priority list to get to this project because of the priorities we have set as a council, and it said, yes, make that number three, or make that number, whatever it might be, uh, I, you know, I just wanna make sure you're not taking licks or taking dings on that, because we've said, hey, do it this way, and it came out a little bit different, so. Uh, I appreciate it. Look forward to it getting done. And for the business, um, you know, the blessing in disguise, you know, the whole, the whole enchilada would've been great. I don't think I wanted to pay that much money for it, if that's what it took. But the other part is there's some serious deal in that, uh, business closing thing. And if you look at road construction and how it impacts business, look at Palm Bay, and when you look down on Babcock, uh, there are quite a few businesses that just didn't make it. Like, they just didn't make it because that construction took so long. So where I want the money, the, actually, I'm glad that our businesses won't have to go through a two to three year period of continuous construction. I think as a Hopkins business owner, I would be happy about that, so, uh, thank you and drive on.
Member Nelson?
I just wanted to add this. I talked to Mr. Cook this afternoon, and what I pointed out to him was, we do need to be informed of what's going on. Maybe, maybe not. We might be able to impact what's happening. We might be able to get a little further ahead. But we can't get ahead unless he lets us know. And also, because people are asking us what's going on, and if we don't know what's going on, we're not looking too good. We're not looking too good. Staff's not looking too good. None of us up here are looking too good. We should know what's going on. So I think that, that to me is the most important. But secondly, if we know what's going on, there's a possibility of being able to impact it, maybe shift something a little bit over to our side. But if we don't know, we can't do that. So I think, I think we agreed that we need to stay informed.
Member Stokel?
Thanks. Um, okay, so just to follow up after some comments I heard. So you said, I guess, the ADA changes yearly. So if we would have, do you know how much it would've cost if we would've done the polls prior when we first were awarded this project? Cause I know now it would be really expensive, but what if we would've started prior to when we first were awarded it? Would it have cost that ten million, twelve million?
Yeah, that's, that's, that feels cost regardless of, of...
So going into it, so there was no way that we could've?
Yeah, the, the intent was that we would be able to work around them. And at a thirty inch sidewalk, crossing a pole, you can do that. At forty-eight, you can't.
Okay.
You cross outside the right of way and it's not allowed to cross on a private property, so, so that leaves you with a pole relocates. Now, like I said, some of the changes now would've made it harder because they moved poles around, because they recently went through a concrete poles, which got bigger and they shifted back some.
Okay.
A, a lot, a lot of challenge with that is the difference between what the city can do and what the state rules say they can do. And we have to, in a, a LAP agreement, we're agreeing to abide by DOT rules, not by city of Titusville standards.
I just, from what you're saying, it just appears to me that there would've been no way around having to pay out at least four, six, ten million, twelve million potentially for this project.
To fit that standard, yes, I agree.
Okay, um, and then wanted to clarify on the funds again. So with this two point three eight million, you said it's federal, but then when we were talking about landscaping, you said that's mitigation. Is that the tree mitigation fund?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's not federal. That would be our, out of, coming out of our city budget?
That's on top of the two point three eight million.
Okay.
You know, we already put one point, one hundred eighty thousand to the CEI firms.
Okay.
DRP contract. Another one point one million would come from impact fees and trust funds to pay for sidewalk infill and landscape mitigation.
Okay, so that, is that one point two million that the city is going to be funding now that we potentially wouldn't have had to fund prior? If we would've received those?
Well, the one point, the, the hundred eighty thousand for CEI was gonna go there either way.
Okay.
The...
But the one point two million is now coming out of the city budget? Okay.
And that, again, it's trust funds and impact fees, those aren't general fund dollars. Uh, impact fees are restricted, can't be used for anything but expansion of capacity.
Alright. Okay.
Okay, I have had extensive conversation with the city manager and others on this subject, and so all my questions have already been asked and answered, so, thank you, Mr. Cook. Next, uh, item is petitions and requests from the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on that, sir? If you'll come up, please? Over here, sir.
Hey, Mayor Johnson, how are you?
Fine, sir. How are you? State your name, please, and...
I'm, I'm Peter Salone. I'm a, I'm retired college professor, moved here from the Houston, Texas area. And, um, we, we've been here a few years now, and we have a problem we share with most of our neighbors. We have a beautiful home, uh, just off of Harrison Street and just west of the tracks. And we can't live in it anymore. And we get so much loud music, first of all, coming from the Lazy Gator Bar parking lot when they close at night. Uh, I can't tell you how many nights a week they wake us up at two in the morning. And all of our neighbors have similar problems. I actually took a video from the corner of, uh, Hamilton and, uh, Birchwood, uh, at about two o'clock in the morning one night, and I sent that video to, um, Mayor Tulve before you. And he said he forwarded it to the city manager and to the police department, the police chief. And, um, in the meantime, um, I've had officers come to the house several times when I've called and said, hey, you gotta do something. And, um, we have a neighbor, uh, we have apartments or condominiums behind our home. Our backyard backs up to a bayou, and on the other side is the condominiums. And, um, we have neighbors back there that come and go at all hours with incredibly loud hip hop music. It's so loud, a mayor, that it shakes your bones. With a bone shaking bass, you wouldn't believe. It sounds like you've got Madison Square Garden in your backyard. And I went out very nicely one night when a young fellow came home, and I asked him very nicely if he'd kinda consider not having his music so loud. That earned me a very emphatic expletive, as he then turned around and walked away. The policeman that came in response told me that I need to move. Well, the problem is, I'm told my, my house is worth about a hundred sixty-five thousand now. Somebody else is gonna pay a good price for that house, and they're gonna have exactly the same problem we have. Every one of my neighbors complains, but when I went across the street and talked to Trey, a neighbor across from me today, his reason for not coming was, nah, nothing's gonna happen. They're not gonna do anything. So it's kind of, you know, but I got a little bit too much Irish in me, I guess. I just don't wanna give up that easy. See you nodding, you must too. Anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to say. And, um, I, I don't see why good people should have to move out. We're taxpayers. We take care of our homes. You know, we try and pre- and increase the value of this town, not just our homes. I like it here. I came here because it's too hot in Texas. And y'all think it's too hot here sometimes. I was like, uh-uh, go spend the summer in Houston. Anyway, that's about it.
If you will stand by for a second. The city manager, it, is, could this be, uh, dealt with through code enforcement?
It, it, it depends. So we'll, we'll take his address and, sir, if you could, uh, if you've been in contact with the police prior?
Yeah, I was told actually that, um, the, the law says that it can't be over a certain number of decibels. And the very nice officer that came last time told me that they don't have any equipment to measure the decibels.
Yeah, we, we have the equipment in code, so...
It's not that hard to get.
Thank you, guys.
We'll, we'll look into it, sir. You shouldn't have to move.
Take care. Well, my dad died a year ago. Unfortunately, he left me his house, so we have moved already to the other side of the tracks. But I'm still going home every day, working on the place, getting ready for sale.
Don't go away. You have somebody who wants to ask you questions.
Sure.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. And so, uh, and this is a question for staff. This, the, that specific business, number one, that specific business, I've, I've, I've had questions before about, and I, I'll share, it's not to disparage the business, I can only state what it is that, that, that I, my personal experience was. In, in one of my first ride-alongs with PD at night, as a council member, um, it was probably just about two o'clock, uh, in the morning. And sure enough, within ten minutes, uh, it's a high-speed chase coming out of that business. Not from the business owners, but from people who are patronizing the business that ran through multiple neighborhoods. Couldn't have been more dangerous. And it wasn't PD at the high-speed chase, it was folks just running. Which then ensued to the dogs, you know, ch- like, is miserable. And, uh, I, I believe that that business itself is a public nuisance. I, I, I strongly believe that. I think we have about three businesses in the city of Titusville that are a public nuisance, that being one.
Well, I, I had thought maybe about fifty neighbors could get together and buy that building and kick them out.
Yeah, well, I don't, in, in my, in my, in my opinion, and I'm one of five, but in my opinion, they shouldn't be open. Uh, and, and the reason for that is because if you look at the amount of calls of service to that business in a month, take our top five most service calls in a month, uh, and, and that's enlightening. The second part is, if you ever just wanna go see, just go at two o'clock, and the moment that you walk up towards that business, you'll smell something in the air that shouldn't be there. So, for that alone, I don't think it's okay. I, I believe that the city of Titusville has, uh, a, a permit to operate. I think that that was Mayor Johnson. I, I believe that was something that was a few years ago, that, um, because of challenges of, uh, bar establishments, uh, not, not being good community partners, the city of Titusville adopted that places serving alcohol had to have a city license because taking action through the state was, just didn't work, right? There was no teeth. Where, so the city of Titusville, I believe, has cause or a cause of action to do something, or? Can you help, can, so can you help me understand?
There's an after-hours permit. It's an OP permit if you wanna sell alcohol after hours. And what we said is if there are so many violations of the code, say for noise during those hours, they would be cited. And it, and after so many violations in a period of time, they could come to council to address that issue. And their ability to sell alcohol after that period of time could be in jeopardy based on those violations.
They would have to close early. I believe it was eleven o'clock.
Correct. There is a process in place to deal with those. Right, that's correct. But right now...
That's what you're referring to.
Right, those alleged violations would be turned over to code enforcement to investigate and determine whether or not citation should be issued under that process.
So, it, so I think from what my understanding is, is that, number one, until, and, until community members call, and I'm not saying you haven't, I'm just saying, until community members are calling to say, here's a problem, doing it internally, I just, I, I haven't seen that necessarily be the most effective manner of bringing attention. So I would just share with you that if you have community members that are as eager as you to not hear that at two AM, uh, feel free to call. And I would be very interested to see where we are on a threshold of meeting that standard of, you know, if they're hitting the borderline.
Sir, the city manager said he will look into it. You don't have to tell, in my opinion, you don't have to tell all your neighbors anything.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Want to speak, sir?
Hi, um, my wife's parents elderly and disabled.
Your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Tyler Paulson, and the address is eleven fifty-five Nova Terrace. And my wife's elderly parents are disabled. They live there, and they're having severe sewer problems. And it's in the street. We've had three different plumbers tell us it's in the street. So we called the city. The city came out, and the supervisor had, uh, another truck with, uh, employees with him. And as soon as he got out of his truck, the first words out of his mouth, well, there's your problem right there. There's a depression in the street right in front of their house. And I says, well, can you guys run the camera? And he says, well, the city only has one sewer camera and it's broke. You'll need to prove to the city that it's our problem, even though that, he agrees that it is. And three different plumbers in, in a month's time have come and wrote a rooter, and they all say the same thing, that it's out in the street. Can someone please help these people?
Mr. City Manager?
Sean? Uh, yes, we'll, uh, we'll look into that. And when we get done here, I'll get your address and your phone number. I'll give you my card, and we'll look into it and get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What is your name?
I'm Sean Stoffer, the Water Resources Director.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, folks, you wanna come up? Good evening. Good evening. Name and address, please?
I'm Yvonne Jenkins, and this is my husband, David Jenkins.
Good afternoon. Evening.
And, uh, our concern was, is regarding the drinking water in Titusville. We received a letter that said that, uh, Titusville failed to complete all the monitoring and testing for lead and copper in the drinking water. It also said, on the other page, back of the page, that our water system recently detected fecal contamination, and it could've come from animals or from humans. However, this, um, let me read the part that's very serious. The fecal indicators are microbes whose presence indicates that the water may be contaminated with human, or I said that, or animal, uh, waste. And that these can cause short-term health effects such as diarrhea, cramps, nausea, headaches, or other symptoms. They may pose a special health risk for infants, for young children, for some of the elderly. I'm seventy-seven. And people with severely, uh, what does that say?
Compromised immune system.
Okay, so, um, there is something that they say is gonna be done about it. And we just wanted to know, we haven't, uh, heard what's gonna be done, and we'd like to hear what is going to be done about it.
Did you read the other, I think that's the same letter that I got this week. I think everybody got it. Did you read the other side of it?
Yeah, they, they, they did say that they're gonna get this...
I'm gonna let the city manager address it, though.
Get this signed and, uh, to refer, uh, questions to, uh, a gentleman here. But my question is, why did the city fail in their monitoring system? Okay, and, uh, that's my question. Is it a staffing problem? Is it, uh, people not trained enough to, uh, to deal with this? Because they did cite those two problems that they had. And, uh, I'm in the same age category with my wife here, so I'm, uh, equally concerned about the situation. So, would somebody please explain to us, you know, exactly what happened?
And what's gonna be done, because this started in that...
Mr. Stoffer is going to address it.
I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sean Stoffer, the Water Resources Director. Uh, it's my name and phone number that are on that sheet.
You're the gentleman, okay.
Yes, I am. Um, I've had the opportunity over the last week to speak to a number of our customers. Uh, I think the first thing that I wanna say is that, uh, the water is safe to drink and has always been safe to drink. This public notice, uh, there's two sides to it, uh, two pieces of paper. Um, there are two separate issues. So the first issue we'll talk about is the, the fecal or the bacteria test, okay? So back in March, at the end of March, we found that, uh, all three of our raw water samples showed fecal bacteria in them. They were positive for bacteria. And we have been sampling these three locations for probably the last twenty years. And these locations, we do that weekly. Um, these locations, they represent the three different wellfields that we get our water from for the city. In the last twenty years, we have never had a positive test result for bacteria. So when that occurred, uh, we were, we're obviously all concerned and taken aback. Upon further investigation, what we found out is that the employee that was taking the samples did not follow proper protocols. We followed up the sampling...
Does he still employ it?
One moment. Um, so just to be sure that there wasn't a problem with the water, we sampled the next day when we found out about it. It was negative. We've sampled every week since then, it's been negative. And so approximately, out of approximately forty-six hundred tests, the only bacteria that we have found were from those three samples from that one day. So what we have done, um, was, uh, well, that person no longer takes the samples. So, and, and we have instilled the importance of proper sampling technique, including cleaning the sample vials as well as making sure that your hands are clean in certain weather conditions while you're taking the samples, so that we don't have false positives, okay? So with that, I can say... So with that, I can say with 100% certainty that the water is safe and that the water has always been safe. And that the bacteria was introduced by the sampler or the employee, not the source. Okay? And also to let you know that the, the raw water, that's prior to any kind of treatment. So even if we did have some bacteria, it would have gone full, through a full treatment process at the Morning Dove plant before it was ever distributed to our customers.
Well, we can appreciate the full disclosure and the steps that were taken to address the situation. But it's an alarming thing to, to read and see this kind of thing happening. And I guess it's a human error that you corrected.
That's correct. And I would also like to add that the, the public notice that we sent out, this is a template that is provided by the state. And we are only able to change a small percentage of this template. We did do our best to explain as best as we could within the sections that we were allowed. But the bulk of the items and the way that it is structured is required by the state to be in this format.
So if we have additional questions, we direct them to you.
Please do. And I, and I, and I would like to just apologize to our customers for any undue concern that this may have caused.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak on the petitions and requests? Name and address for the record, sir?
Robert and Jessa Simmons, 420 Canal Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I would just like to say that talking about the lead and copper stuff that's in the water, we had our water tested about three months ago in a little tube like this. We let it sit for a while. It turned completely black.
Who tested it, sir?
It was a water, it was a water cup in there. They came and tested. We had a water purifier put in. The water is crystal clear now. But over a period of time, when he did the test, it was like yellowish. As it sits from day to day to day to day, the wife just threw it out last month, last week, two weeks ago, it turned completely black.
I don't know what they did, sir, so I can't comment on it. And it's somebody who's not doing the test professionally, but doing it as part of their sales. So I, I can't comment on anything there, other than you have, do your neighbors have the same problem?
I haven't talked to them about that.
I can't comment on it, sir. There's lots of things that could have happened in that situation.
About a month before that, I was having problems in my throat. And I was supposed to be going to a throat specialist. And right after that, you know, after we had the water test and everything, it is a big difference in my throat. I didn't have to go to the doctor for that because all this mucus I was bringing up and all that. It may have not come for that, but I'm just saying, you know, it was a big difference. And now I don't do that coughing anymore and bringing all that mucus up like I used to. And it's a big difference in my whole body, you know. And maybe just luck, I don't know. But we're just putting that in there, you know. We're just putting that in there.
What a distaste it may have been.
In, in case, if that was the reason, you know. So that's what we want to say because lead was in the water.
We appreciate it. The city at a certain time, what do they call it, flushes the lines. And so there was a period where there was more chlorine than more and that made water taste a little bit different, too. It wasn't harmful, but made it taste a little bit different. So maybe that's what the taste was. I, I don't know, sir. I can't really tell you what we want, but I appreciate you letting us know about it.
Yeah, we just want to put that before you in case, you know.
Sure, sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good night.
Hold on one second, please. Go ahead.
And this is for staff. And so Coach is good to see you.
Thank you, Seamus.
And, you know, from Flint, Michigan was, you know, that was a few years ago. And that was a wake-up for America relative to infrastructure and lead and pipes and so on and so on. And as a council during that time, I know that we took that very seriously and Water Resources has taken that very seriously. Would you be able to talk to us just about how to, lead and pipes, you know, how does that work with the city of Titusville? Is there lead in pipes? Is it positive? Like, how does that work for us?
Fortunately, in the city of Titusville, we don't have any lead service lines. So, and, you know, we are a much newer system as compared to Flint, Michigan. So, so very good for us that we don't have lead in the issues. But regardless, all water purveyors are required to test for lead and copper. And I would like to add, too, I know the, the previous speaker had concerns about their water quality based on taste and odor. And we just put this out there for the rest of the customers. If you do have concerns, please call our office and we can come out and we can test your water for you to confirm that it meets all quality standards. And I'll, I'll give you my card here in just a few minutes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, folks.
Ma'am, you can only speak once. Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Just give them a...
My name is Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville, Florida. And I'm here to present to you something that has been presented already, I think it was in 2016. It's a photo, a photo taken by Carlos Ramos near his home. And it's a photo of culverts that are under Dairy Road. And he says that those culverts were like that for several years. And what you see in your picture, trying to describe also to the audience, is that there's two large culverts under Dairy Road and they have sand cement bags filling up halfway full. And also on the other side, I was told that there were, there were sand cement bags on the other side filling up halfway full in the culverts, which is kind of a strange thing. Why would you put culverts in there and put sand cement bags in there? And I presented this to council before, I believe. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Behringer have seen this before. I asked the question, who put the sand cement bags there? And I never have got an answer. And at, at that council meeting, we had a number of people from the community that were concerned, well, what, what's going on? Nobody knows who put the sand cement bags there. Of special concern to the residents is that there's about 80 homes in the Hundred Year Floodplain in this area that are upstream of this. So the question is, how in the world would someone put these in here and leave them in there for, I was told it was several years? Now, the question is, to me, is did I ever see any of this? Well, I, I went there some time ago in 2016 and by golly, I saw sand cement bags there and before they were removed. Because we complained to the city and county. I say we. Now, so I'm asking the question, the title of it is, who put the dams in the culverts? And so I'll be asking the city and the county again because the question is, is who would do that? I mean, these are, this is like a dam and it's not just a dam, it's not just overflow, but it's restricted from the top and the bottom because it's damming up a culvert. And you can see where the water line is, which is, looks like it's about maybe a foot and a half or so above the pipe, maybe two feet. And so it increased the flooding. I, I am especially asking this question because I have a number of times said something that is, is not very pleasant. And I've said that it appears that the city of Titusville sometimes ignores, denies, and cover ups problems, misrepresents them. And this may be a case. So I'm asking again for the city to look into it. And I would like to ask the city manager to ask the city to, to look into this, please.
Thank you, sir.
That's the question. Look into it.
This picture does look familiar to me from several years ago. Have, has those, have you checked it recently? Are they still in there?
Well, I haven't checked it recently. No.
So this could have been a picture from 2015?
Oh, no, this was a picture that was taken maybe in, in the 1980s.
Oh, okay.
Eighty, or, or 90s, 80s or 90s.
We'll take a look at it.
So, so I'm not looking, I'm just wanting to, what happened then? Thank you.
I have no way of knowing that, sir, neither does anyone else here. Thank you, though.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak on the petitions and requests? If I don't see anyone else, we're going to... The next meeting will start in, at 5:00 after 7:00. I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned.